Let's start. You all ready?
Yeah.
Yes, all right. I'd like to call the Roxbury zoning commission to order tonight. It's July 11th, 7:30 PM. And this is the call to order to hear a public hearing. Proposed public hearing, proposed amendment to zoning regulations, section 20, definition of character.
Julie, we need the, we need the public hearing agenda up. That's the regular meeting.
That's what I have here.
I've got, I'm looking at public hearing. Let me try resharing it.
Okay.
Sorry, Bill, didn't need to interrupt you. It's probably confusing because two separate agendas went out.
I've got both of them. It's just not cooperating.
Okay.
I've got both of them open next to each other. So let me see if we tried doing that. There we go. I hope you can see that now.
Perfect.
Okay.
Sorry, Bill.
Okay, so I'll reopen the meeting. It's Monday night, July 11th, 7:30 PM in Roxbury. I'd like to call or the meeting of the Roxbury zoning commission to hear the, the purpose of our hearing is the proposed amendment to zoning regulations, section 20, definition of one word character. I'd like to seat members. So tonight we have our regular members, Tim Tester, Elaine Curley, Jim Conway, and myself. Is that correct? And who else? Anyone else here? No.
Chris is an alternate.
Okay. Chris, are you ready to be seated?
Sure.
And then, right, our alternate member for, we'll seat for Alan Johnson or Chris Hagerty. All right.
That's good.
Before we start the meeting, I want to say something because Cheryl's not here tonight. And the reason she's not here is she's, she and her family are observing Shiva for her dad. Her dad passed away last, I think it was Friday. And so I just want to acknowledge our sadness for Cheryl and her family and that our thoughts are with them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you for letting us know.
Okay, we'll start this public hearing and the first thing we'll do, I believe, is we'll read the verbiage, the text of the, of the proposed amendment. It's, this was inserted in the voices on June 20th, 2022. Roxbury zoning commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 11th, 2022 at 7:30 PM at the Roxbury Town Hall and via Zoom and teleconference. The purpose of this hearing is to solicit public comment on the proposed amendment to the Roxbury zoning regulations to add a new definition of character to section 20 as follows. Character, where the regulations refer to charact- to the character or retaining the character of a district, neighborhood, community, or surrounding area, character is defined by the rural and other physical site features that provide sense of place, including natural features such as soil types, terrain, slopes, ridge stops, horizon lines, rock outcroppings, watercourses, ponds, rivers, floodplains, wetlands, stream belts, endangered species, wildlife habitat, prime and important farmland, soils, pasture, and other unique and fragile features, including stone walls, tree-lined roads, dirt roads, scenic views, hillsides and valleys, forests, meadows, and and by streetscapes, historic structures, features, and settings, and other architectural elements of the particular area or zone. Where these regulations refer to character of a proposed use and harmony of that use with the town, district, or neighborhood. Character is defined by location, type, size, scale, proportion, appearance, and intensity as legal definition of the proposed use. So that's the definition. And we'll just read that. We just read that for the record. Is that okay? Julie and Karen, so we don't have to read for each group we distributed to?
That's right. That's right, Bill.
At once.
Once is good.
All right, so the legal notices were sent to Voices, the Roxbury Town Clerk, and the Public Notice Registry. And I have now the referrals of the groups that we sent these notices to. The first one being from the planning commission. I'll read that. It's only three sentences. The planning commission replied on June 9th, "The Roxbury Planning Commission reviewed referral from the Roxbury zoning commission to add a new definition of character to section 20 of the Roxbury zoning regulations." "The planning commission voted four to one to confirm that the proposed new definition of character will be added to the Roxbury zoning regulation is in compliance with Roxbury's plan of conservation and development. The planning commission wishes to thank the zoning commission for referring proposed amendments to us for review and comment." Peter Fields. Okay, that was a referral from planning. Now we have a referral from the Northwest Connecticut Regional Planning Commission. I'll just read their staff comment. That's all I have to read. The staff comment from the NWCT. The NHCOG staff finds the proposed text amendment not to be regionally significant and has no apparent intermunicipal impact. That's from the NHCOG. The referral from, the comments from the West COG are simply, "The opinion of the West COG staff is that the proposal is of local interest and with minimal municipal impact. Therefore, is not being forwarded to to the adjacent municipalities and the region staff is making no comment." The next referral, the next staff commentary, reply is from
Nogga Tech Valley?
Nogga Tech Valley Council of Government.
Nogga Tech Valley Council of Government. And they responded, "Should a response not be transmitted to you honor before 30 days from our receipt date, you may use this acknowledgement as proof of compliance with the appropriate statute." And those are the replies of the referral. So now we'll open the public hearing to public comment. Is there anyone wishing to say anything about this proposed amendment to the zoning regulations? Is there anyone in our audience?
Is there any what?
Is there anyone in our, in the public audience?
I don't, I don't see anyone. Julie, do you see anyone that we don't see on the screen?
There's only one person in the audience, Nancy Vaughn from Voices.
Okay.
Okay. I guess, I guess there's no public comment. And if that's the case.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second of that motion?
Are you laying out second?
All right, motions made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's to, our meeting, our public hearings adjourned.
Great.
Well, that's a tough one, huh? It don't feel very important. No one's interested in what we do.
Sometimes they are.
I guess, I guess that's a good thing. I was getting ready to define the word intensity. Doesn't anyone know what intensity means? What did that amend?
We looked it up, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
Let me get my, I had to change computers at the last minute.
Oh, you did, huh? Oh, my goodness.
So I'm on my old computer and had to do a normal sweat worrying that I wasn't going to be able to get on. So, so that public hearing meeting is closed, so it's time to open, is it not? It's time to open our regular meetings.
That's correct.
So, again, it's Roxbury zoning commission, Roxbury, Connecticut, a regular meeting, Monday, July 11th, 2022, and the time is, I don't have the time. Someone give me the time.
7:42.
7:42.
7:42, all right. And I'd like to see members.
And Alan is here.
Alan's here?
Yep. Oh, good.
Okay. So Chris, you'll be an alternate again. So our, see our regular members now, Alan Johnson, Elaine Curley, Jim Conway, Kim Tester, myself, Bill Burgin. And Chris Hagerty is here as an alternate. First thing is approve the minutes of the last meeting. Has everyone had a chance to read those?
They look good.
I just had one saying and I just now have to find it because it's on a different set. It was, was a typo. I'm sorry. You know, I had it. It was on another set that Karen sent. I think.
Was about meats?
No. It was, it was a, it was just a missing word. Like a commission.
Kim, I think it's the one Candy pointed out to me. It's the third page. Jim Conway noted he would like to see Zone A. Word two was missing.
Yeah, no, there was another one. It had to do with something I said.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I just have to find your, this was the revised. I'm just trying to think of regular meeting.
Yeah, sorry, that was attached to the first, um,
Yeah, so that's,
It's a little confusing. Sorry about that.
You know, it's not, it's not going to make that difference to the meaning, so I think we can leave it.
Okay.
By the time I find it, it won't be worth it.
Okay.
That's all right.
Does somebody want to pick up that comment that Candy gave us, just for the record?
I don't recall it.
Yeah, so say it again.
Page three, third paragraph. We need to add the word two to the first sentence.
Okay, so page three, third paragraph, add two to the third.
Thank you. Perfect.
I don't remember what you said.
Now I see.
Yeah, this one word was missing. Thank you.
Okay.
So no, no other changes to the last month's minutes?
No.
I'm getting a motion to approve last month's minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of June, our June meeting as amended.
All right, June, June 13th, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Second?
Oh, Alan, you're muted. I saw your lips. You're still muted. Okay. Okay. Good. Did you second?
Second.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I saw that. I was lip reading.
All right, all approved of last month's minutes.
Aye.
The last month's minutes are approved. Before we go on to public comment, which there isn't any, and before we go on to, is John Cody here? I don't think he's here. He's, he told me he might be under the weather tonight. And so he won't be here. He said he didn't have much of a zoning enforcement officer report. Before we go on to vote on the, are we all in agreement that the the public hearing proposed amendment is satisfactory?
I think we have to do that in discussion. Oh, I see, before we vote. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because if we all agree, we can vote on that tonight and get it off, get it off the, off the docket. But before we do that, I want to say that it's tough with this Zoom situation. But I left last month's meeting feeling that it wasn't conducted very well because there was a lot of chatter, a lot of this back and forth. And I think that's probably really hardest on whoever records our meetings. But not that we're the most formal, want to be the most formal in the world, and you probably don't have to call me Mr. Chairman. If you want to, you can. But we have to try, and it's hard because when Julie has something on the screen, I can't always see everyone. So you, someone maybe wanted to say something, but I don't see them raise their hand. But I'd like to try and rein in and just be a little, conduct a little better meeting and keep it just a little bit more, less fragmented. There was some function that I think my grandson was telling me about where you could click a flag or something. I don't know about this. And you could raise your hand. I would see that, even if I didn't see your picture. Is that true? Is there such a feature?
Yes.
All right, so can someone click, raise their hand right now, just so I can see it? Okay, Chris. All right, so that's what I'm looking for, a yellow hand. Oh, and Kim has a thumbs up, so it's,
I have a heart. A reaction.
A reaction.
Okay, all right, so if we can just keep that in mind and I'm probably the worst offender, could be the worst offender, but if we can just try and rein things in a little bit and be one, oh, it's more formal, that would help for recording. And like I say, it's pretty tough not, not being able to see. So, that's my, that's actually, that's my chairman's report. What was that? So let's talk about the public hearing we just had. And whether should, we should vote to amend the, approve the amendment to the, to the regulations. I forget what page it is, but it's the word character. Anyone have any comments? Any reason? Elaine?
I'm going to practice. See my hand?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. I, I, I just want to say it's, it's a very welcome and necessary addition. So, thank you. It's a good job.
Well, thank you.
It was a nice letter to the editor, if anyone saw it in Voices. Margaret Minor had, after our, where we were discussing it and decided to put it to public hearing, she had written a letter to the editor and just talking about the importance of, of what we are proposing and that they, she hopes that other towns will follow. So it was nicely written. I just wanted you to know that.
Yeah, it's a nice letter. Didn't read it. Also, any other comments about our proposed amendment? No other comments?
Oh, I think, yeah, I think we, I think we did a good job going over it.
I just, I did somewhere I looked up the, the legal definition of intensity, just in case there were any questions and did not do that. So why don't we, you think we should vote on this now? I do too. So when we vote and say yes, we have to tell, say why we say yes. Is that correct? Karen?
I think, I think Gail overturned that a while ago. We had always done it and we were apparently in error doing it, so.
That was saying, yes.
We need a, we need a kind of a, how would I say it? Like a group consensus?
Right.
Oh, that's right.
And then a vote, and then a vote, so.
Yes. So therefore,
It'd be appropriate to poll everybody to just see how they feel about it and then then get a motion. I think that would be okay.
You want to start, Jim?
Certainly. It, to me, the purpose of this is to add clarity to our regulations to make them actually more understandable and, and to the point. And add clarity.
Okay, Alan, do you have any comment to make?
I think the way, the old way was a bit ambiguous and this, again, brings clarity to it.
All right. Jim?
I, I agree with what they just said. I think it's, the word clarity, I think, is really important. It's less subjective.
Supposed to be objective.
Right.
You're testing me. Elaine?
Well, I believe that it offers the residents considerations that they might not cover otherwise. They might not take into consideration, otherwise we're making a decision about our, about our activities.
Yeah. And I, I just believe like all of you, it was pretty silly to have character mentioned 41 times in our regulation and I have a definition. So I'm all in favor of that definition. So with all that being said, does the sum of what we just mentioned equal a consensus? That can be construed as a census, or do we have to digest it into one specific consensus?
I think we have to have one statement, or statement that we have to include, so. Elaine, what did you start with? You said offers residents?
It, it offers residents the consideration of all factors when the zoning commission is making decisions. I think I said something to that effect.
Karen, did you guess that?
Yes.
I don't know if we can make sense of it.
I think we know what it means.
It provides the residents of Roxbury the opportunity to consider all the factors when making zoning decisions. Does that sound right?
Sounds good. And I also would include what Jim and Alan said too about adding clarity to the regulations with the, by adding the definition. Does that sound?
Yeah, it's great.
Okay. Karen, are you good with that?
Yes.
Great.
With that consensus, now we can vote. Correct?
Now we need a motion. Yep.
Oh, you wrote a motion, so.
Need a motion and a second, and then a vote.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve the amendments to our regulation, section 20, character.
I make a motion to add the definition of character to our zoning regulations.
Any second?
This is Elaine. I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Puzzled. And the amendment is accepted.
Unanimous. Thank you.
I have my hand up.
All right. Go ahead, Elaine.
I, I just have a housekeeping question. How is that put in, Karen? Do we, now, I forgot how we're doing it. Do we move all the numbers? When we add that? Do we have to move all the numbers in the, in the regs to add that?
It, yeah, that, that definition section will end up having to be renumbered.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the review of HDC requests. As you remember, last month, Wendy Walker came in and basically asked for our help to address the potential risk of old houses, antique homes being torn down if big additions were made to them. And I want to, and Jim hit the nail on the head when he described to all of us how this could be done. And was that in the meeting? Was that in the minutes?
Uh, yes. Right?
Okay. Jim explained the process of petition to amend regulations, which would result in a public hearing and input from residents. He suggested that the HDC recommend language to be considered. When someone comes in with a, what it's called a,
A petition?
A, yes, it's called a singular petition, an outside petition. When an outside petition comes in and is presented to us, we can't do anything about it. We can just hear it, put it to public hearing. Is that correct, Jim? What you?
Yes.
And then it goes to the public hearing and it comes back to us for it to vote on.
Right.
You mentioned that in the minutes that which resulted in a public hearing from residents, he suggested the HDC recommend language to be considered. Now, that would be trying to amend things after we accepted their application for a, for a outside petition. But you also mentioned, Jim, that we could ask for their help. Well, I don't know where, how you remember all this, Jim, but in the outside petition, it does say that we can ask for ideas to be, for new regulations to be brought to the commission.
Yes.
So we can accept it and it can't be changed, but they can bring ideas. So that's one of three ways. You mentioned one of two ways, Jim. By outside position and by ideas brought for new regulations to the commission. So those are two options they would have. The third option, which I dug up somewhere, was changes, it's called, changes on its own motion. The commission on its own motion can put forward new regulations, whether it thinks it prudent to do or so, in doing that, it is not bound by timeframes above, by the timeframes above. So if we decided to take this on for ourselves and we didn't take any advice from the historic district commission, we could take it on ourselves, but there's no pressure on us. It's not bound by timeframes above. It does have to publish notice of public hearing to consider the proposal and include notice of content. After the hearing, it can be, we can approve it or withdraw it as, with any public hearing, so. I, I guess Wendy's away. I did invite her to come to the meeting if she wanted to add to this. She was a little bit timid last month because she just said she didn't know the regulation. But with what you dug up, Jim, and this final motion on our own, we could probably put something together. But I would think that we would almost want them to do some of the work for us and make some of the suggestions. And then we could take it up on our own motion, or we could take it up jointly.
Correct. Can I speak to that?
Yes, please.
Basically, we've already written the reg that we thought was going to work. And for us to change what we've already have done would be like, we're looking for something to do and we really don't need to be looking for something to do. Because we've written a good regulation. And if somebody comes to us and wants to amend it, that's that's perfectly fine, but we want them to do the legwork. Write down what you think needs to be changed, because what we've written, we've accepted and voted on, and we can't be changing everything and it's, it's just good zoning for somebody to come forward. If they want to change it, then give us the verbiage to change it and we'll look into it.
So you're kind of in favor of the, not in favor, but if this were to happen, you you kind of lean toward ideas brought for new regs, brought to the commission.
Yes, yes.
And then we take it and we can say, oh, you, we can work with you, or, or we'll do it on our own, or we don't have to do anything unless, then they could, they could force our hand by coming in with their outside petition and then we'd have to go right to public hearing.
We have, the zoning commission has no reason to change what we've already adopted.
Okay, so therefore our own changes on our own motion would, would, wouldn't be, wouldn't complement what we've done.
I mean, right. What we've done is what we felt was the best thing for the town. And there's no reason for us to go back on that. We've already said that we feel this is the best. If somebody comes to us and says, well, I got a better idea, well, let's hear it.
Okay. All right. I, I mean, does anyone have any questions about what you and I were just talking about?
Yep, I do. So I think, I think when someone comes before the commission in the way that Wendy did last meeting, I think it's an opportunity for us to just see how the regulations are working, you know, and because we did it doesn't necessarily mean, you know, spent the time, we spent a lot of time on it, I know. Doesn't always mean that it's complete, you know, it's could be, and I'm not saying we have to change this, I have to go into it or whatever, but I think it's an opportunity for us to just step back and go, huh, I wonder, you know, what the repercussions are for what we did. I would like to, I did contact Gail with a couple of questions and I would like to read a response and I think it's interesting, if I may do that.
Do you have that response, Kim?
I do.
Yeah, it's quite, it's, I'll take a vote.
No, I, this is a short, this is just specific to the twenty-five percent. So she, she responded, I had asked a question about, I let her know, you know, Bill and I contacted her, let her know about historic district commission's concerns. And so this is a section of it. She says, I note that before the Roxbury zoning regu- regulation, twenty-five percent expansion allowance, the primary dwelling homes that were non-conforming could not expand without a variance based on hardship, which could not legally be based on personal or financial hardship or what someone wanted, but by statute and court interpretation. And it's hard to meet that standard. Then the zoning commission allowed expansion of a primary residence, which I would think all houses you referenced from the historically significant home list would also be. Then more recently zoning extended the twenty-five expansion to other structured buildings with some further allowance of vertical expansion, thus providing even more flexibility for the non-conforming homes. As you note, there are special regulations to preserve historic barns. The expansion allowed by Roxbury is probably one of, if not the most lenient in Connecticut, which of course has many towns with many historic homes, houses. But typically those towns do not allow expansions over what existed before zoning. So, you know, and now it's me talking, I think it's important for us to understand and be reminded that we have changed regulations to allow a lot to happen.
So is that a change for the good?
Yeah, I think she's, you know, she's, our town attorney, Gail, is thinking that we are doing a good thing, you know, that we are actually thinking carefully about the use of these non-conforming structures and trying to keep them and trying to be flexible. And she says, towns can decide to allow some flexibility on non-conformities and I congratulate Roxbury for its sensitivity to providing incentives to saving historic houses.
Sounds like there's no question here.
So I'm just, you know, it's, this is all part of public record, this meeting, so I just want to make sure that, you know, we state that, you know.
We've done it, we, we did a good thing.
Yep. And I think it's okay to have a conversation. And I, I think it's important to note that, that twenty-five percent is not the problem. You know, because the historic district commission, I think, was saying that because we had the twenty-five percent, that became the problem. But then the house is non-conforming and before that they couldn't expand at all.
Correct. And you know what? It's not the charge of the zoning commission to preserve the historical houses. Because pretty soon South Street will look like anything down in Greenwich where they add on humongous additions in the back. And I, I felt that the zoning commission was trying to control the size of the house that was twenty feet from the road. And I thought we did it in a way that was very progressive. And if the historic commission wants to preserve a house on Welton Road, okay, and end old, old house, I think it's going the wrong direction. Because the house is going to be, lose all its identity totally when they expand it.
I was thinking about that, too.
Yeah, well, we had we had the idea of giving South Street becoming Greenwich or Westport and having monster houses next to each other. But it was further mentioned and the information that Gail gave us was if a regulation could provide for further expansion of non-conforming historic houses conditioned on evidence from architect or engineer that without the expansion to allow adaptive reuse with expanded setbacks, demolition would be advisable. So we're, we're kind of threatened or we could be gambling with the whole, the whole, whole house being demolished because anyone can buy a house and demolish it after ninety days. So I think that probably had some of their concerns also. So we have our concerns, you know, what you just mentioned, Jim. And it's true, we don't, we don't want South Street to be ten feet apart houses from St. and Stern. But this is, this is another, another viewpoint from it. So we don't want that. We don't want to see the houses torn down either. So it's, it's not something that we can, I can't make a decision right now. I, I have to think about this.
Well, the zoning commission is preservation, character. We just accepted character. And if we, it's kind of redundant to go back and say, okay, you can take a little house on South Street and add on another three thousand square feet in the back. And pretty soon you lose all your character. So I think it goes hand in hand. And we allowed twenty-five percent for the bump out for a bedroom or bathroom, whatever. And we're trying to retain the character at the same time.
I think representative with an example that could be real, maybe it's just an idle threat over on Old Roxbury Road, there's a house that's all non-conforming and they want to add seven bedrooms.
Right, one they were referencing.
So, and if, and if they can't add the seven bedrooms, they could tear that darned house down and
Right.
put their seven bedrooms twenty feet farther back.
Right.
For the zoning commission to try to work with the historical commission, you got to be careful. We're not about that.
I think that's a given, Jim. We have to be very careful.
Yeah. And I think twenty-five percent is great. You can't go any bigger. I mean, that house on Old Roxbury Road, twenty-five percent of that footprint, it's quite a substantial addition.
It gives the whole set of bedrooms, huh?
Almost, if you need them.
Well, it's good, we have to talk about this stuff and we have to talk about it. And that's what we're doing and, you know.
But I, I still, I'm going back to if anybody, anybody, not just the historical commission, not Wendy, if anybody wants to change a reg, step one is you bring in your verbiage, you bring in the words. Because we've already gone through this and the words you're looking at is the words that we accepted. And I, I don't think we messed up, okay? So if you want to change it, give me what you think and we'll throw it out there.
I agree with that, Jim. That's, that's very fair.
Bill, you have two hands up, Chris and Elaine.
I don't see them.
Elaine was first.
Thank you.
Oh, Elaine.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I, I was going to say that I think it's an opportunity for discussion. I, I believe I recall Wendy asking, how did we arrive at twenty-five percent? She had repeated that question a number of times, was an arbitrary number. You know, I agree, we have to tread carefully, but I also believe that this is something that we should probably be you know, talking about. I don't think it's, it's an open and shut situation where we wrote it and it still applies. I think that we should, it kind of evaluate. What I did was look up, I happened to somewhere across the March meeting of the ZBA, although the house isn't historic, that was a perfect example of what Wendy's trying to say. It was a fifteen hundred square foot footprint over on North Street. And the people wanted to add, they've been there for, I don't know, twenty-nine years or so. They wanted to add a master bedroom, a bathroom on the first floor. And they had restrictions, setback and septic and whatever. And I kind of followed through, from what I understand, it was passed. In that case, it was passed. I could be wrong, but John's not here to verify, but that's a situation where it went slightly over twenty-five percent.
Yeah, right, this, this EBA would, would be able to allow beyond what we set, for sure.
It still would?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Elaine, thanks for raising your hand. Kim, thanks for pointing out raise hands. Chris?
The, what we're trying to get away from is having arbitrary answers to each application, right? That we approve one person for one thing and one for something else and we can't, it has to be an even hand across all of them, right? Is that the correct view of it? And we can't be making up arbitrary rules for different applications.
This is, can't, can't do spot zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How do, how is it that other towns are able to have either historic districts or, or historic boards where they get to determine whether, you know, someone can paint their house a particular color? I mean, their, their rules are far more stringent than just saying they can't tear it down for ninety days.
They have an overlay, overlay zoning. Okay. And, Chris, I don't know, Jocelyn Air was talking about overlay zoning where certain overlays, you, you flop the page and if you fall within that, you can paint your house green.
Okay.
Overlay zoning, we've never, to my knowledge, we've never adopted, accepted any overlay zoning. We are point specific, A, B, C, and D. And you would take within C and throw another page over it and say, oh, this little corner town down here, you can do certain things. It doesn't mean you're, you, you could do an overlay for expansion if you felt that it worked in that area. You can do an overlay for different things, but I believe, I could be totally wrong, but it's called overlay zoning.
Because I, I think we share the same goal that, that they do, that, you know, we don't lose these homes. It speaks directly to character of the town. And if the alternative is that we come up with some, some way to amend it as opposed to having them torn down and just.
Well, that's what we did with the twenty, we did that with twenty-five percent. And sure, you could go to fifty percent. But a lot of these homes, I mean, some of them, yes, are tiny and they say, oh, that doesn't work. But some of them are three thousand square foot, non-conforming home.
Right.
And twenty-five percent is a pretty good addition of three thousand square feet. And I thought back when we did it, that was a, that's a quarter of the size of the home. And, and it didn't change the streetscape, it didn't change the look of the town. It went back away from the road. And if that didn't work for the homeowner, well, you know, and if you could move your house back, I'm sorry, but we have to draw the line.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
No, no, I'm good. Oh, it didn't come down, sorry.
Okay. So historic district commission, I forgot who asked this, Chris, if you did maybe. They do have an application process, that people who are in the district do have to appear before them for, for changes. So, just so you're aware. I think it's just more quiet, maybe you're not, not a lot happening. So.
Is that particular streets or is that a particular area or?
No, there is a historic district, so, yeah, there, there are boundaries there.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
So. Is this some Chris to take home with us for the month?
Well, I, I still think that if anybody comes to your commission, Bill, and wants to change a reg that's in our book, write it down on a piece of paper, bring it to us, we will take it to public hearing without any changes and let the public address it. And that's the process. And I don't see any reason to deviate from the process that we've always had in the past.
And that process is spelled out by us and it exists.
Yes.
We can't turn our back on it if someone comes.
No, they can, they can just scratch it down and, and hand it to you and say, okay, they want to amend this reg and this is what they want to change.
In that case, we'd be writing it with them, but there's also that option of the word petition in it.
We don't have to write it with them. We accept it, we take it to public hearing and at the end of the public hearing, we can decide if we want to tweak it, if we want to deep six it, or if we want to accept what they've given us. We got three choices.
Yeah, that, that we do, right.
I do think though, you know, with what Bill said, we do, there is that option. But if the commission as a whole decided that they wanted to take it on as a new reg and rewrite, we could do that.
Well, you're opening up a big Pandora's box.
I do understand that. I totally understand that, but I'm just saying, you know, just in terms of process, it is one of the options, I'm not necessarily.
We could do that, yes.
Yeah, that's all. I'm just, I'm just making that point. Not that I'm going for that.
So we didn't, we didn't really need to discuss this to make a decision tonight, but kind of uncovered the decision is already made for us. So the historic district commission comes to us with things jotted down, as you say, Jim, or a whole petition with specifics, we can entertain both of those. We have to entertain both of those.
Yep, when they bring you something and you have to put it on the agenda, public hearing, and this is word for word, we've had, we've been through. We've had, we've been through this before. And some of them we denied, and then we denied it, and then we changed the language to make it work for the whole town.
And then it's part of this regulation that, you know, Senate, it has to apply equally throughout each district.
Yes.
This is Kim. I do agree with Elaine, and I think Chris mentioned it too, that it, this does offer an opportunity for discussion and I'm, I'm still mulling it all over in my head of how I feel about the house being torn down. And I'm, I'm still in that point, so I'm not really finished with the conversation, but I am maybe for tonight. I'm just not quite sure where to go with it.
Right. Well, the bottom line is the number, the number right now currently is twenty-five percent. So if you're going to change anything, you got to change that number. Now, we're going to have to go to each individual person and say, what's it going to take to prevent you from tearing your house down? Oh, it's going to take seventy-five percent. Oh, it's going to take eighty-five percent.
Right, no, no.
We got to come up with a number which we've already come up with, twenty-five percent.
I understand. Yep, but I still think that the conversation is important to have. And that, you know, we're just talking about what, what's the outcome, you know, and how do we feel about that and, you know, you know, I think it's important too for them to understand that they could try ZBA. You know, that's what ZBA is for. And they could go through the process as it's, as we offer in the regulations.
Well, I'm going to leave it at this. I would like to hear what the Historic Commission has in mind. That would help me to, could continue discussion. I'd like to hear what they have in mind. As changes.
I don't think, I personally don't think they have anything in mind specifically yet. But we're, we're now starting to talk about hypothetical things and I think probably the thing to do best is rather than agonize over this at all anymore is we'll just table this and put it on the agenda for next month and talk about it some more.
Wait till they come to you.
Well, that's a good point too.
Wait till they come to you. Anyway, you got enough on your plate.
All right, so any more discussion on that? I didn't mean to shut anyone down. No other hands? All right. So that leads us to review zoning regulations. I'll, I'll say section one purpose. I, or we were going to take this to Gail to ask, because we were doing check, we're checking things off last two meetings. And it, it got to seem kind of silly. And we seem to be trying to rush to accept everything and you know, how, how, how does this one zoning regulation for the whole state, how is it to be applied against Roxbury? And I have lots of questions and lots of concerns. I moved into Roxbury thirty years ago because I liked it and I, I didn't want to see change. Well, guess what? In the thirty years I was here, there was, and I've said this all, you've heard me say this over and over again. There were twenty-four, there were twenty-seven changes in Roxbury after the Horrigan family moved in, because that's how many houses we built in this town. So change happens whether we like it or not. But I don't think that, this is my opinion. It's subjective. It's my opinion and you know, you, you can tell me it's not my place, but I, I think we should, as you said, Jim, earlier, we should proceed very cautiously. Find out from Gail what we have to do with this mandate. When is the deadline for this mandate to be satisfied? How do we, know Roxbury so well? How do we take, honor a mandate that we know we don't have the infrastructure to, to do? Where do we get water for, you know, uniform housing? Do we build a dam in the Shabard River? So there's some things that we in Roxbury know don't work. But it's now a state mandate that says we have to do these things. So we need to know what flexibility we have, what leeway we have. And I think the thing is to just seriously take this up with Gail and see what latitude we have. We, we, we're not here to thumb our nose at the state of Connecticut. That's not what we want to do. We're not sticking, we're sticking a hornet's nest. We're trying to comply. We've done a lot of things. Our P O C D is religious, our, our steering committee is religious. We do have a Affordable Housing Regulation, which doesn't work. But we're a pretty good town. And as far as I know, from what I've heard, there's more than half the towns in this state that haven't done anything with this, with this mandate. So we need to know our risks and we have to find it out from Gail. And I will find out from Gail answers that I can give relative to this for next meeting. Elaine?
Very good.
Thank you. The, the thing I wanted to mention, I read an excerpt from the Connecticut Alliance last month. And I may not have sent it to Karen, but I sent her the lead URL today. I'd like to recommend that the entire commission reads, I think entirety. It's forty-two pages. But before we go ahead and worry, I was impressed with what they had to say about the fairness of the application of space. And according to what I see, Roxbury is in the zone. If I read it correctly, Roxbury is in the zone where we are required, it, it is speculated that we should be expanding our affordable housing by one to two hundred and fifty units. Somewhere in between one to two hundred and fifty. And it does go on to address our, what's appropriate for each community. So I, you know, I think that we're, we're taking this and we're saying state mandates, of course, that there are, you know, written mandates that we have to comply with. But as far as the, you know, the results of what we do, you know, I think everything that we've succeeded in doing over the last four years has led to the initiatives that the state has put forward. You know, I read, I read the minutes and, and I, I read Jim's comment that said he, he doesn't like the idea that the state is telling us what to do and, you know, how to, how to change our zoning. But according to what I read in this Connecticut Alliance, they're not inferring that we have to match all the other communities in the state of Connecticut. They've actually separated our requirements. And that's what I had heard them refer to when I attended the first two meetings at CAG. So, you know, we're moving in the right direction, of course, but I don't know that we need to make. I, I think we might be perceiving these changes as necessary when we're already accomplishing them. So that's all I want to say. I mean, there's, there's some good reading in there.
Can you send a link so that we can?
Yeah, I sent it to Karen in my email. I don't know if she got it. Because I got it kicked back saying it didn't go.
Elaine, I did get it and I would be happy to forward it if
Okay.
the commission agrees to that.
Yeah, there's a lot of information, you know, some of you curse me and others will have a picnic on it, but it's a very interesting read.
Okay.
Thanks Elaine.
You're welcome.
Well.
Yeah, that's good.
Karen will get that to all of us and by next month, I'll, I'll have some, something from Karen, or something from Gail.
Very, very good. Thank you.
Anything else? So. Any other discussion on the purpose of section one?
No.
Okay. Move on to zone A, which we're going to move right over because this being our fifth canceled big screen meeting where we can put a big map on for everyone. We'll put that off, zone A off until, till next meeting. Kim, you have something to say about Affordable Housing Regulation Correction?
Yes, I checked.
Can I just ask a question quickly? Bill, are we tabling that until next month? Is that the idea?
Oh, it's on A, yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry. So if I recall, the Affordable Housing Regulation, it, it's not included in permitted uses. I checked with Gail on that and she said that we do not have to have a public hearing. That it would just be, we just have to write up something, agree to it and, and just insert it into permitted uses near where the elderly housing regulation is referred to as well. So it was a clerical and more of administrative deal, which makes life a lot easier for us. So I'll participate in writing that up and then we can review it as a group.
Next, next month.
Yep.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other comments for tonight's meeting?
Yes.
On anything, Jim?
Yes. Keep it quick and short. At the bottom of Weller's Bridge, it went to, I know they're having a public hearing at ZBA for the non-conformant house putting in a wall, they called it a garden wall. It's going to July twenty-third, ZBA to appeal. And in the meantime, they painted it white to make it less intrusive. It's been painted white. Whatever it is, I have no clue what it is. And obviously, it's not a huge issue, but these things are going to pop up more and more in our town. Because people are coming to Roxbury, wonderful people coming to Roxbury and say, all right, I'm just going to do this and then we'll see what happens. And I don't know what, how the zoning commission wants to play this out. Should we be part of the ZBA meeting or have a comment or at least listen in? Because more and more non-conforming issues are going to come up. And there again, which we've discussed about Historical Society, we would have to amend our regulations to allow this wall to be put in ten feet from the road. I think it's something the zoning commission has to give some thought to because they're not going to go away. And right now, it's either the ZBA is going to say, okay, go do it and build whatever you want, or that somebody's going to tell them to tear it down. I think we should be a player.
Jim, what latitude do we have as commission members speaking at that meeting?
I wouldn't, probably none. Probably none.
We can, we can speak as.
As why we have that regulation in effect, it's safety. Okay, you're sitting out there at the edge of the bottom of Weller's Bridge, traffic coming down. Somebody veers to the left and pretty soon there, you're, there's a safety issue.
Jim, where is that safety written in our regulation? Do you recall? Our, our concern is safety?
No.
Oh. Text me.
Yeah, I, I'd have to.
But anyway, I'm just wondering, because more and more of this is coming up. And they did a, it's a corner lot. So they said that Weller's Bridge is the thirty-foot side setback and River Road is the front setback, which is fifty, neither one of them work. But so we should, I don't know what to do with this because if the ZBA says, yeah, go ahead and do it, there's no hardship. They don't have to do it. They can go the other side of the house. Should we be a player?
Elaine has her hand up.
Elaine?
Yeah, the section is under purpose one point three. One point three point two to promote the health, safety in general, welfare of the community. That's the first place safety shown in the first chapter. The other thing I'd like to say is, I, I agree that, you know, it's within the setback and, and all of that is a concern. But at the same time, we don't have a regulation stopping from this homeowner, stopping this homeowner from putting lawn chairs and sitting out there without the benefit of the wall.
Correct. No, they can, the wall, it becomes a structure. And the wall is attached to the ground. There's electrical conduit, there's plumbing, there's everything.
But, but would you, would, we have the same objection if the homeowner came to us and said, it's, it's a, it's for a rose trellis. Or, or a vine trellis, that it's purely decorative. Would we have, would, by regulation, we wouldn't be able to allow it anyway, right?
Correct. If it's attached to the ground, it's a structure.
Our regulation specifies flagpoles, mailboxes, fences and stone walls.
So my, my discussion is safety. Safety shouldn't have to come into it. I, I know it's a precarious and, and common sense will tell us it's a very dangerous location for anybody to be located in. But it is part of their property. The discussion is that it is out of the setback. It's within the setback. That's the discussion.
Well, I just wonder, I'm, I'm just saying that more of this is going to happen. I didn't know how the commission wanted to sit back and what, let it happen or become an active player and try to write letters to the ZBA and say, hey, we have these regulations for a purpose. Just bringing it up because, you know, there, there was a time that nobody, everybody respected. Everybody respected our regs. And now we don't get much respect. Just saying.
Well, if we let some people get, some issues get by, other issues down the road are going to point fingers and say, well, they did it. So I can.
Yep.
Chris has his hand up.
Chris, all right.
Yeah, just, just an issue with a corner lot. With a corner lot, both setbacks are, are thirty-five feet. There isn't, you don't determine one or the other as, as your front. All, all setbacks are thirty-five feet.
Well, we have either fifty or thirty.
No, on the corner. I think.
Yeah. If, if it's thirty, I, I can look it up, but I know in my own case, since I was a corner lot, it, it's the lower setback on all lot, on all lines. It's not, you don't choose where your front door faces and call that the, the fifty foot. It's, all of them are the same.
We got to look into that. That, I'm not disagreeing with you, but we got to look into, because we had an issue come up with a front and a side setback and it was where the, not as much the front door, but the length of the road frontage. The longer road frontage became the front and the shorter road frontage became the side.
Okay.
But anyway. So, I agree. Very good.
We'll look at that.
Yep. But anyway, I just wanted to see what part, what part, or do we sit back and just turn it over to the ZBA? Or do we play a part in it at all? Maybe not.
I think these have to be looked at in an individual case. The fact is, there's a huge steel guardrail on the curve of the road up above on the, on the property line there on, on the roadside. I, I'd have trouble sleeping in that house thinking some trucks, some trucks and trucks go there on the road all the time that, that they, they're not, they're not supposed to be and someday, some ten wheeler with all the gravel is going to come down there and first go take out the guardrail, barbecue and and half his house.
Anyway, that's, that's very understatemental, Alan. There's, there's a little case history to that house, but I'll save that for another time. Because that curve was not supposed to be there when they rebuilt Weller's Bridge. But.
You mean the road design is for?
That house that we're talking about, the, the current select person in nineteen fifty-six said, we'll move your house so we can make the road straight to Weller's Bridge. And he wanted a new house built. And he wanted a new house built. He didn't want his old house moved. So that selectman said, well, just leave it right there and I'll go around it.
Interesting story, great history.
Oh, I can give you the rest of it, but anyway.
Small town.
If you want, Jim.
But I just, I see more of this happening in our zoning regs where it's act and react. Everybody does stuff. We get no, and I think it's kind of like digging your heels in and sure it goes to ZBA, totally agreed, that's the process. But let the ZBA know that, you know what, you guys can't roll over on all this, all these decisions. Anyway.
Jim, that wall is wrong. Regulations is wrong.
Yep.
It's not a fence, it's not a flagpole, it's not a mailbox, it's not a stone wall. It's a brick wall with a block wall inside with pipe conduits and electrical conduits.
Yep.
Wrong.
It's a structure.
And they painted it white after they got the NOV, notice of violation, they went and painted it white.
And this, Kim, I think, you know, right now the process is working as it should. You know, it was, like anything else, things are brought to our attention. When someone sees it, we don't go off around town and start, you know, checking on everybody's property to see what's happening. If there's a problem, we're notified. And so our CEO goes out, checks it, he did NOV, and so now it's going through that process. So I, I think that is, you know, this worked, you know, maybe, maybe it went up fast and we didn't see it fast enough. You know.
Well, no, the ZBA is the, the last stop.
I know, yeah.
And the ZBA has granted approval on issues in the past. And it might become time that we work coherently with our ZBA.
Yeah, I, I don't know the jurisdiction on that. I, I'd have to.
Oh, they overrule us.
I know, I know, so.
Anyway, okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, it looks like that I've said enough, if I've said anything, so there's no chairman's report. Or chairman's report, I always look forward to that. Uh, and there are no communications, Karen, are there any communications that we don't know of?
Sorry, I was muted. No, there aren't, Bill.
Okay. Which brings us to number eleven on our agenda. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Well, can I, one more thing and I, I'm not going.
Go ahead.
Can, can we meet in person next month?
Yeah, the reason we didn't meet this month is because there were two known COVID cases in the town hall.
Right.
Recently.
Okay.
And I was very anxious to meet, I changed it on, I guess it was Friday. I mean, it would really be nice to meet in person.
Okay.
We, I just didn't think we could, wasn't fair for any one person, it would be uncomfortable. And I don't think the table, if eight of us were there, plus two, ten of us were there to sit close to each other.
We can, we can still do hybrid though, so if some not comfortable, stay home.
What do you mean? We can do hybrid.
Well, somebody can be at home and then the rest could be in person.
I didn't want to go in the town hall today or last Friday just because I don't want to learn disease.
No, no, I, I understand, but I agree with you, I had it.
All right, we got to really do our best. We, we've loaded our, five times now, we've canceled the meeting. So we'll do our best.
Make it happen.
So. I need, I need a motion for the.
I would, I would like the honor of making a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I second your motion.
Thanks, Alan. All approved?
Hi.
I.
Hi.
Nice folks.
I felt like.
I'm going to be obnoxious. It's my birthday.
Happy birthday.
Wednesday. It's the shameless biggie. So. I am flaunting it.
You can qualify for AARP now.
Ah, they've been haunting me. I'm, I'm, I keep writing them, telling them not to send any more paper waste.
Well, that's because you weren't fifty, now you're fifty, you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. What happened to you? When did you get diagnosed with senality?
Take care all.
Take care.
Happy birthday.
Bye.
Hey Elaine, I'm the day after you.
Hi Karen.
Happy birthday Elaine.
You, you are Thursday?
I am.
What's your big plan?
Uh, none yet.
Oh, okay.
I may be surprised though.
Oh.
Oh, is it a big one for you too?
Uh, big enough.
Is it, is it the same as mine?
Uh, no, I don't think so. You're, you're, you're a spring chicken compared to me.
I don't think so, honey. I don't think, we're, we're having this big initiative. It's called Seventy From Seventy.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, do you know what that is?